Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its republic and to its citizens. One nation, under God, this is our home.
And can I have a motion for approval of the present agenda?
No move.
I am just gonna note here, I think our board members are aware, but for anyone else, there was a change to the agenda format tonight. We still have two public comment periods. But there's been a small change, namely, the second comment period previously was dedicated towards tonight's agenda items, or any night's agenda items. What we've done is we've moved the agenda-specific comment to the front of the meeting so that the public has a chance to comment about any agenda items before we vote on them. The open public comment has been moved to the end of the meeting, which also gives some of our staff and other individuals that come as part of the agenda to meet and report the ability to have a predictable timeline. So with that, we're gonna, we're gonna move into our first public comment period. The public comment period is targeted at 20 minutes. We give community stakeholders three minutes each to talk about really anything that's affecting the district, although this first comment period's gonna be just about tonight's agenda. So if you have a comment about tonight's agenda, when you start, I'll ask you to state your name, the agenda item that you're speaking about, and then, and then you can give your comment. If it's not about tonight's agenda, you'll just have to hold your comment for the end. So actually, one of the things that happened was the second public comment was shorter. What we've done is actually lengthened that public comments. They're both the same length. Because it never really made sense to try to... I think the original thinking, although I wasn't here when it happened, was the idea that the second public comment was sort of for closing comments from the community. But I think I really wanna just give the community to have sort of a fair moment to respond after, respond before, whatever's happening. So with that, we don't have any public safety or COVID protocol items on the, on the agenda. So if that is what you'd like to speak about and your name's on the list, just hold it for second comment. Do we have anyone? If you're online and you'd like to speak during one of these comment periods, you can raise your digital hand. We'll get a read on that. And if we don't see it, just keep it up. Do we have anyone that wants to comment about a specific agenda item tonight? Okay, so I think... How does everyone feel about giving the students a chance to... We have to amend really quick the format here. I think, you know, since this is the first time we've done this, if the students are gonna be leaving, that would make sense. But I think we really need to move through the agenda and get business out of the way. So, so everyone, you know, I don't think we need to do a resolution, but is everyone in favor of getting the students from the microphone? Okay, great.
Okay. Hi, I'm Taylor Renme, back again. I am at a loss for words because as a ninth-grade high school student, I have been left on the sideline. I have been pleading my case for weeks and feel as though I'm speaking on deaf ears. I'm pleading for you to reevaluate the situation. As the variants have changed, as the variants have weakened, the data has changed. It destroys me watching my best friends out on the basketball court, knowing I should be out there with them. This is tearing apart families in Columbia County and causing unnecessary anxiety. We spend our Tuesdays at board meetings instead of enjoying family dinners. And we have done our research. We spoke to the county coroner and the local funeral homes in Chatham and Valeisha to verify that there are no kids dying from COVID-19. And in fact, there are no kids dying from COVID-19 in Columbia County. I am pleading with you yet again to reevaluate the sports mandates. As you are not aware, the toll has taken on those affected by the mandate. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. And that was brief. But the other thing we've done is instead of having a timer on my screen where no one can see it, we have a timer and then I do my best to hit the button at the right time. Do we have, do we have one more student here? And Taylor, you're, you signed the sign-in form, right? Okay, great.
Good evening. I want to start with an observation from President Biden's speech, or Governor Hochul's, or many other of our so-called leaders. The first thing they do is remove their masks so they can communicate effectively. Why are you still pretending that masking teachers and students is helping in teaching us to communicate? The fear in your narrative have messed with your critical thinking abilities. Sad. Throughout our last three months here at board meetings, the feedback we have received is eye rolls, comments such as "they're a small group and don't represent the community", and now the latest of "why do they always say the same thing?" We say the same thing because that is how education works. When you don't understand the lesson, it gets repeated so you don't get left behind because you weren't paying attention or don't understand. But seeing you on a different format, here it is. I want to start by thanking you. Thank you, Board of Education and Superintendent, for not pushing back on the mask mandate. We get to wear masks all day, every day now. It's great. Us students no longer need to brush our teeth or wash our face. You have made our lives so much easier. Thank you for teaching us that our own mental health is much less important than making triple-vaccinated adults feel safe. Thank you for teaching me that even the smallest risk is not worth taking. Life is always best when you take the path of least resistance. Thank you for not asking all of the students how we feel about vaccine mandates and masks. If you did, the majority would say they hate masks, and then you might second-guess your decisions to make us wear them. Thank you for not allowing me to see the facial expressions of my friends and peers. Thank you for teaching us to never question authority or think critically, but instead, just follow whatever the people in charge tell us to do. Obedience is best. From your great leadership, I realize that thinking for myself is overrated and not necessary when I can just do what you do and make decisions based upon fear. Thank you for pushing your irrational fears on me. Thank you for teaching me that being a morally superior person only requires that I cover my face for eight hours a day. As you might know, other states don't force students to wear masks. Those states are out of control recklessly, putting students at risk every day. Masks and mandates don't, or masks and mandates work, even though they have much lower rates of infection, depression, and suicide. Also, thank you for staying quiet about the survival rate in school-age kids. We know from your example and decisions that it will never be safe to see anyone's face again, unless you are eating at a restaurant, not in our cafeteria, just restaurants, because science. Thank you for not challenging this irrational fear and ineffective masking and vaccine policy you have allowed to be put in place. I mean, the NIH spent $42 billion on research and not $1 went towards studying the mental health of kids. Great role models you follow. Please don't give in. Stay strong, stay courageous, stay quiet, and let's keep pushing ineffective vaccines, mandates, and masks on us students forever. Thank you so much. Your concerns for us are overwhelming.
Do we have a name for the record? Addison, Addison Andrews. Thank you, Addison. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna move into board comment next. I just have one brief comment, which is, of course, we're aware of the challenge to the commissioner's ruling on masks in schools that's winding its way through the court. The court, the board has discussed this matter. Not as a group, but we've done an informal poll. Our feelings here really haven't changed. We're not a, you know, a public health policy body. If the state's ruling is removed and we're no longer legally required to enforce a mask mandate, then the school does not anticipate replacing that with local policy. So of course, we're all looking to see what's gonna happen at the state level. I don't have any more information than you do on that other than it's currently under discussion in the courts. Does anyone else have something for, for board comment? Okay, well, we're gonna move straight on into the student representative report from the report.
Okay, so I'm gonna start off my report with a definition. Epidemic: A widespread occurrence of an infectious disease in a community at a particular time. It is no debate that school shootings are a problem all over... It is no debate that school shootings are a problem schools all over America are facing. The United States Secret Service states that from August of 2022, the U.S. has had 1,316 school shootings since 1970. And these numbers are on a disturbing incline. A study done by the Federal Bureau of Investigation, U.S. Department of Justice, says that four out of five school shootings, at least one other person had knowledge of the attacker's plan but failed to report it. The American Academy of Pediatrics reported that nearly all mass attackers in 2018 made threatening or concerning communications, and more than 75% elected concern from others prior to carrying out their attacks. In almost every documented case of active shooters, warning signs were shown. In 2018, there were the most school shootings on record, according to the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. And research, research shows that if we knew the signs and acted proactively, certain outcomes would be different. I'm asking Chatham to please do something about this. It is never a bad decision to be prepared and educate our students on how to be safe. We could do this in age-appropriate ways that make the disturbing but very real issue at hand approachable to talk about. Showing informational, educational short videos, letting students know what to do and how to act can potentially save lives. So I want to leave you with these questions. Attending school today, what I feel safe? What can I do to make these students and staff at Chatham feel safe? Okay, my second issue. Well, not really an issue, actually, this one, well, but midterm week went very well and it ran smoothly with the new two-hour delay schedule. So that was good, and I wanna congratulate all my peers for getting through midterm week. And then we did get a various amount of comments from our anonymous suggestion box located in the cafeteria. Among these suggestions were comments on the vaccine mandate for high-risk winter sports and discipline regarding mask wearing. And then they also talked about like new gym equipment and food waste in cafeterias. And food waste, and like decreasing that. So if anyone wants me to elaborate on the previous topics, I'd be happy to. And yeah, that's my report.
I'm, I'm curious, I mean, maybe it's too early to tell. Do you anticipate continued feedback in the box on a regular basis?
I hope so. I really encourage all my, you know, all the people I go to school with to use their voice because, like, no matter what, I'll, you know, bring it to you guys. Um, so yeah, I, I hope more people start putting in their opinion and suggestions.
Certainly, if you have something you wanna raise to us, we wanna hear it. I, it's very early right now. We've only, I think, a few weeks into the box. But I'd love to see like a word cloud or something, you know, in a, in a couple months, just to get a heartbeat from what's happening there.
Yeah, and unfortunately, our administration meeting has been moved due to like the power outages. But we wanna get like more like surveys of the student body going. And we have other things in mind that we wanna bring to you guys. But definitely, I'm more like surveying the student body to see how they feel about certain issues.
Great. Any comments on Mia's report?
You were talking about, I mean, obviously, the safety we're aware of, and we worry about it probably as much as you do. I would, on the food waste, what were there comments about how we could cut down on it or what their thoughts are?
Yeah, so I actually have the exact note here, but it said, "problem." A lot of the food goes into the trash during lunch. And then they gave us suggestions, like, instead of people throwing it out, putting it in the refrigerator that we have, or having like composting and other, you know, not taking more than you're actually gonna eat. And yeah, other suggestions like that.
Are you asked if you go through the line, if there are any things you would prefer to decline and not, so that they wouldn't be wasted?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just reading out what the note said, but yeah, it was like composting, recycling, et cetera. Yeah.
It's, it's worth noting, and, and this was with help of the state, but we've had feedback about the disposable tray waste for years. And there's been some recent progress there, so yeah, keep the feedback coming.
Sounds good.
Okay, I think we're into the superintendent report from Dr. D'Angelo.
Good evening. Thank you. You may be able to make sure that the students are aware that it's, it's, it's not, it's offer, it's served, not just offered, correct? So to qualify for free and reduced lunch, we have to give the entire, the entire meal, correct?
That's correct for the meal, but actually, for some of these ideas, and I'll get in touch with you after, I'd like to hear them. And then I work with our supervisor, because we have done some things in the MED pre-COVID, and we'll see what we can do with like food tables and such, so I do wanna hear those ideas.
Okay, yeah, that's...
It's worth exploring. I know there are some restrictions in terms of, once it's been served, that it can't be, can't be shared, and certainly during COVID, in terms of that. But we, in terms of recycling and separation, stuff like that?
Yeah, I know that, like, previously, some, there's some people in our community that have like farms with like animals and stuff. So people have given like their apples that they don't eat to them. So I think that's, you know, awesome.
That's awesome. We can definitely follow up on that. Thank you.
Okay.
Just two quick updates this evening. One related to the power outages that we've continuing to, that we continue to have here at the high school. In terms of information that's new to the board, there isn't much at this point. But we, we've determined that ultimately, the repair that was done a few weeks ago, it wasn't that repair that failed. We've yet been plagued by another issue, and we are now firmly believe that it's the actual building transformer that, that is failing after quite a few years. So we are now proceeding with a quotation to replace that transformer. We can't remain on generated power long term. So the strategy will be that we will, we're seeking a rental transformer, which is more economical than trying to rent the generator by week. Mainly because the generator, the transformer that we would need to right-size for this building isn't something that's off the shelf, if you will. It's not, you know, you don't go down to Home Depot and grab one of these. The lead time is anywhere from four to six months from time that you place the order. So rental transformers are readily available. Typically, the strategy is that we would, since we're on generated power, we would remove the old transformer. We would be required to pour a, a new slab or concrete base for the, the new transformer. And the new transformer would be of similar specifications to the rental. So the idea is all the prep work that we would do to put the rental in place would be in anticipation of replacing it with the actual transformer once it was available. We are getting cost estimates for all that work. I couldn't have them in time for this evening's meeting. It'll be in the coming days and weeks. We certainly anticipate at this point, Mr. Chuddy has been working with our school district architect. We anticipate once again this becoming what's called an emergency project through the State Education Department, which would make us eligible for building a reimbursement on a portion of it. And, you know, we will continue to update the board. We would likely bring resolutions in terms of an emergency, resolution, emergency project, either, probably either later this month or early, early March. The, once the transformer was available, which would seemingly, if you figure out the timeframe, be summer, we would need to shut the building down for the day as the old one is replaced, or the rental is taken out and the new one is, is put in. So that's kind of an update in terms of the power, power situation here at the high school. We're also going to, going to at the same time make provisions to bring our service a little closer to our property. One of the challenges we have every time that we have an issue is that our service goes up, buried underground, up the hill to, to the tracks. And anytime that we need access to it, we have to have express permission from CSX. And that's not always easily, easy to get. And so by bringing the service down onto our property, the demarcation between our property and, and NISIC would be at the point where we could reach it, service it, and not be at the, at the mercy of, of the permission from CSX. So we're exploring all those things. Once detailed information's available, I'll share with the board and the public, and we can go from there. We have not, it was a bit disruptive when it went out this last time, that afternoon. We lost a few hours of instruction. We were fortunately back up on generated power. The contractor that working with, that we're working with, LaCourne Electric, has been awesome in terms of accommodating some short notice and some late work schedules. And so we're very thankful for that. But as we sit, we're here this evening, we are still on generated power. Any, the whole building.
So there's a lot, lot going on there, and it sounds like the details may, may need some time. Just for the next, like, I don't know, two weeks, three weeks, what should we expect in terms of interruptions, necessary actions? I'm just curious.
So right now, we are hopeful that the generator that's in place will take us through to the February break. We're in the process of securing that rental and figuring out where it's available on the East Coast and getting it here. So right now, for the next few weeks up until the break, we'll be on generated power. And as long as the generator's functioning properly and we're keeping it fueled every day, we shouldn't experience any problems. That's, that's our hope.
Do we have some kind of guarantee on the, on the generator? Like, those things are not as reliable as like power stations. So if it conks out, I mean, we didn't have to scramble, but those last two came really quick, so...
I believe the company's located on the Clifton Park, and the generators are serviced on a regular schedule. For instance, the one that we had here, it had, it had left our property that day, but they couldn't turn it around because it was due for scheduled maintenance. So they do know that these are intricate to keeping business continuity going. And they are, you know, they are serviced on a regular basis to try to prevent any disruptions. So that, that's, a few weeks that we need out of this to get to the February break would not seem to be unrealistic from this particular generator we have on site.
I don't have any other questions. The finance stuff can wait.
Mike, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I, I've been working with the architects, so what we are gonna do is emergency project. Done a few of these in the past. We'll have an authorization. We gotta get an amount. And then we'll have an approval. We'll increase our budget. We'll use our unreserved fund balance to help pay for that. But the idea there is we'll get 50% back when this is finished from state aid. And I confirm that we're gonna look to go after the previous rental, the previous costs. You know, we're spending $8,500 a week, so, but all those costs can be wrapped into this project, so that'll, that'll be beneficial.
And the, the rental time on the transformer, that would be part of the emergency repair?
We're looking to do, wrap everything together. This is an emergency.
So no insurance claim then?
No claim on this one.
Okay.
So we're at the mercy of this generator, actually, for the rest of this school year.
No, I, I think, I think what I'm hearing is sometime during the break, they're gonna pour concrete and replace it with a rental transformer. That's the plan, right?
Yes.
So, oh, so we do not have to wait for the new generator that's coming in seven months?
Right, so...
Okay.
Generator, temporary power, and transformer.
Okay.
So we're, we're looking to get off the temporary generation by renting a transformer. And we're renting that transformer as the new one that will be the eventual replacement, long-term replacement, is ordered and, and secured. So as soon as we have more information about when we can get a rental on site, as you can imagine, the, what I described, we want the rental to be almost identical to the one we're purchasing. So when they bring it in and put it in place, they are staging it for the eventual replacement. All the wiring, the slab, everything that needs to be in place. So when the new one comes in, it can just be slid into place. It's 12,000 pounds, so we're talking craning the old one out, craning the rental in, then craning the replacement in. So there's, there's quite a bit of work ahead of us.
Just, just one other thing. I wanna, you know, personally thank Andy and the team. You know, been here on weekends taking care of this and all the hours that were put in. So I do wanna go shout out for that group.
Yeah, hopefully, this will be the, the end of power problems for, for a few minutes. Although I know we, we have discussed the need for additional power generation on site. So that may come up again during the capital cycle here.
Yeah, it would, it would be ideal in terms of redundancy that once we get the new transformer in place, that we replace and upgrade the existing generator, which doesn't, isn't a large enough capacity to operate the whole building. In a future capital project, the idea would be to take that generator and relocate it to the middle school. There's nothing wrong with the generator, it's just undersized. That generator would be large enough to run the middle school. The middle school currently doesn't have backup power. And then replace it here with a generator. The current rent, the current rental is about 350 kilowatts, megawatts, kilowatts. So we know what, we know what we need to right-size this building, because we have got quite a bit of experience over the last few months with knowing how to generate power. And that way, we'd have redundancy. You know, the, the transformer certainly is going to be more reliable than the one we have, but that doesn't mean we don't lose power from the grid. If we were to lose power from the grid, then we would have a backup generator. So ultimately, having both of those in place is gonna provide the resiliency and redundancy that we ultimately need to be, to keep our continuity here going. Um, so Matt, I just wanna add a little bit to what you had mentioned in terms of, in terms of masking. So last evening, the appellate court upheld the stay till March 2nd. This is new information that I'm just getting prior to the meeting. So if you were following it, there was a court case in Nassau County. Then the Department of Health went to the appellate court and see, and saw a stay. That stay was temporary, pending additional information. That information was submitted last Friday, and now the stay is in place until March 2nd. Some other dates that seem to be a bit confusing, there's the governor's mandate for masking in public that was initially to expire on February 1st. That has been extended to February 10th. And in both those cases, they don't relate to the mask mandate that's been imposed upon us by the Department of Health in schools. That one that goes back to August was a commissioner's determination, and that is set to expire on February 21st. And as Matt said, this is probably good news for those that are with us this evening. In talking with Columbia County, there is no appetite to impose any local mask mandate should this legal mandate be lifted. And as you heard by Matt saying, that we would then not be looking to impose one here locally as well. That will be, that will provide some challenges. As you can imagine, right now, we are, we are contact tracing or a notification based on the current protocols, which is three-foot distance in a classroom as long as people are wearing properly fit masks. So there are some things that are related to the mask that if the mask mandate were to be lifted, we're gonna have to work through some, some of those other, other conditions for which we would be notifying individuals that may be exposed and how we would handle that. But I think there looks to be some sort of end in sight. That's what I have.
So I think we're gonna move into the fun part of the evening with Mr. Michael Chuddy. He's got our, Chuddy, he's got our updated state aid projections.
So let's, let me pull this up, but... So tonight, we're gonna go through, now similar to years past, we go through the executive budget. So this is the state aid revenue we're gonna discuss. Now, remember, this is the kind of the first run-through. And then in early April, the legislators meet with the executor, executive, and then they decide on what the state will be, they say will be, what they agree upon. So this is kind of a first draft. This kicks off our budget season over the next few months. We meet pretty much every two weeks with finance. We meet, we met last Thursday, and then we, we present to the budget the following Tuesday. So for the state aid, actually, there was a couple positive notes this year compared to years past. One thing, the increase in school aid was 2.1 billion. So what does that mean? That was 7.1% increase in education for state. So on the seven point, there's a $216 billion budget for the governor. So this 7.1% is 31 billion went to, to, for state aid for education. So that is a significant increase. Pretty much all other budget codes were held at 2%. One of the big things is operating aid. So what they're trying to do is they're trying to correct the, some of the districts, you know, they ran their foundation or operating aid formula, I think, when I started in '08 or '06. You know, they started that formula, and then they had tough times fulfilling their obligations, so they cut money back from districts. So a lot of districts rode millions of dollars, so they're trying to pay those districts back. So that's where the majority of the money's going. Fortunately for Chatham, since if you run our foundation aid formula or run our operations, we actually would be overfunded. So all the districts that are overfunded, they help hold harmless. They've been doing that every year. And they're expecting a 3% increase. So that 3% is larger. A lot of times... A lot of times, when I come here, it's zero for hold harmless districts, or it's sometimes 0.25. So that's one of the positives. We're already starting at a higher number if they do fund this. The other nice thing is, under Cuomo, we always talked about the expense-based aid. So BOCs, transportation, building aid. So those are aids that we spend money one year and we get reimbursed the other. So if our transportation costs go up or our BOCs costs go up, we spend more, we get more. If we spend less, we get less. But he was trying to combine these all into one aid, pretty much four years in a row, and then just give us a flat, small increase. So NISBA and NISCUS and all the organizations always fought against this. The nice thing is, the new governor didn't even bring this up, didn't change any of the formulas. She's keeping everything as was. So those are the two positives on that note. Go to the slide for operating aid. So here's the operating aid. So like I said, foundation aid or operating aid. So out of our $8 million that we received from state aid, you can see it's 5.171 with that 3% increase. There is a deduction that comes out of this the following year that I'd look at and adjust with Brian Simon. So we have students placed at residential placements for special ed where they actually live there. So we receive funding for that, some funding, but they take out a local share. So for that, $50,416, that's our local share that's being taken out next year. So on the net, and I took out some last year, you can see, year-over-year, $145,928. As I stated, a lot of years, we look at this operating aid, this executive budget, we're looking at 0% increase. So this 3% definitely will be beneficial for the budget. Now we'll go through the aid lines. And one thing I do want to mention, it didn't hit our operating aid formula because, like I said, we already received more than we would be entitled to if you ran the formula. But the wealth of our district, and it's fluctuated since I've been here, but over the last year, we actually went up. So remember, the wealth of the district is, it looks at our income to the average income of the state, and it looks at our property value to the average of the state. It takes a half, 50% weighting of each, comes up with a number. So if it's 1.0, it means you're an average district, your average wealth. If it's higher than one, you're wealthier. And if it's less than one, you're poor. And then they funnel more money, and on these reimbursement aids, they funnel more money to the poorer districts. Our ratio actually went up from 1.467, so we were a wealthier district, to 1.54. And what's driving that is our property valuations have increased more than the state average over the last few years. So we had, I think when I came, we had about 1.3 billion worth of property value in our district, and now we're at 1.6. So as we've been increasing, yeah, a little over 1.3 billion, and now we're almost 1.6. So as we increased on that, and other districts have gone up too, but we've gone up more than the average, that's driven some of our wealth. And we have had a slight increase in the income with the wealth, but we're heavily driven on property value. So some of these formulas, that's where some of the decreases are. It's really attributed to a drop in reimbursement rate. So first one's private excess high cost, that's for special ed students. So the state helps out with some of those costs. You can have over $100,000 costs for a student. So the private excess is in private placements, and that ratio actually went down from 78 to 76.9%. And that really attributes to that. You can see that decrease in that type of dollar amount, that $27,000 decrease is mainly attributed to the drop in the rate. And one thing, and I stated in the past, we get most of this line is private excess cost because the high cost is for public placements, either in our district or at BOCs. And before you even hit a threshold, you have to cover over $60,000 in those costs before you can get any money back. So if we had a $100,000 student and they reimbursed less, you might get $15,000. On the private side, you would get about $60,000. So there's quite a bit different. So a lot of this number is the private placement student. So, but the decrease is, the 27 is attributed to the rate drop. And remember, I make adjustments. I meet with Brian Simon in March. We look at exactly who's in the programs and what we anticipate, because these are estimates at this point in time. The BOCs aid, we used to get about 51 cents on the dollar for our BOCs expenditures. And that rate has dropped because our wealth, that's dropped because the assessed valuation's gone up. So that's gone down to 48.4%. So once again, I know it's a few percentage points, but it does have an impact. Now, BOCs aid, actually, you can say, why is it going up 34,000? What we did with BOCs is, we had Giles Felton, our IT director, resigned. So we've run everything through BOCs to assist us. Now we're reevaluating that structure. So we are spending more. You know, it's offset with his salary, but we ran it through BOCs and we'll get aid on that. So we're going to get more aid because we're running more expense for one year on that. And remember, every expense we spend this year, we get reimbursed the following year. Transportation aid, down 18,000. Same thing, that was, for every dollar we spent, we got 32.8 cents last year, now it's 31.7. So that would actually attribute to about 30,000 if everything was held even. We're dropping 18,000 because fortunately with COVID, and we're starting to do more field trips, and we're starting to transport more for sports. So as we spend more, finally get back to what we used to spend, this reimbursement will go up. As I stated, over the last couple of years, we did a lot less transportation. So we spent much less than anticipated. So we saved money there, but then the revenue the following year was less. High tax aid, so this is for districts that they look at how much your taxes, the tax levy is compared to the income. If it's over 3.2%, then you were eligible for relief. This has been, I think this was put in about 15 years ago. That's been held the same. They don't change that. As long as you qualify, we still qualify, so that's flat. Then the other ones are reimbursements. You can see small amount increases. Computer hardware aid, we get a slight, there's a slight increase. And then library software textbook is based on enrollment. Each year, this has dropped slightly because our enrollment has dropped. Building aid is the other large piece. So you can see, we went from $900,000 to $883,649, a $17,000 drop. Whenever we do a project, we try to time the aid with the debt service payments, the principal interest on the bonds. And this is what's happening here. This drop is attributed to the 2006 project. One of the high school pieces fell off. So some of that aid has fallen off the project. Our rate for this is 49.6%. So roughly every dollar we spend on building, construction projects, we get half of it back. Like I mentioned, that emergency project, we're going to get 50% back on what we spend. So the total state aid is $116,636 increase. So we're getting close to $8 million, 7.993, or 1.48%. This does kind of tie into my projections for our reserve plan that we went through with some of the projections. Because I said, even though we get 3% on operating aid, a lot of these other aids balance out to flat or no increase. So kind of what I was estimating was a point to a point and a half percent in state aid when we did our long-term projections, which I think will hold, as long as they hold as harmless. So that's what I have on this. And then any questions on these numbers?
Yeah, just, can we talk a little bit? And I'm maybe going into speculation land here about the wealth index.
Yes.
And I don't remember the term where we adjust towns' assessments using a percentage scale.
Equalization rate.
The equalization rate. Do the equalization rates impact that calculation?
No, because we're looking at actually the full valuation after those rates change. So really, we're looking at the full value of all the property. So those changes up and down the equalization won't have an impact.
I'm just trying to, in my mind, understand if this is, what kind of trend we're looking at here in the future. And I guess I don't know, but.
Well, 2008, if I went back, or nine before, we kind of had that crash. The values, when I started, I think I started almost 10 years ago. The values were higher, and then they started dipping down, the property values, and now the trend's getting back up. So we did have, we had a dip down, and now, and if you look at home prices, you obviously can see that there's a change.
And the wealth index went down and came back up?
Yeah, it went down. But remember, it's relative to the state.
The whole state.
So that's, right now, we're increasing, a lot of areas are increasing, it's just relative to the state averages.
Okay.
And it's not a huge, it has some impact. I mean, we're talking, you know, you look at some of this money, but we've stayed in that 1.45 to 1.55 range. We're not going to fluctuate greatly outside of that. But it does, a few percentage points matter, 20 grand here, you know, it does add up.
Well, I mean, I don't know how that metric is calculated, but it sounds like a big change for one year. Or maybe it's not. I don't have any other questions. You guys have questions on these line items?
So we're going to meet, you know, finance will meet again. We'll do the administrative operational budget, the first part, next Thursday. And then we're actually going to look at the tax cap. So I'm trying to get finalized numbers on that, so we have an idea of what we're looking at for that tax cap at the next meeting. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chuddy. We're going to go into board committee reports. We're going to start with the policy committee. Pat, why don't you tell us what you guys have been working on?
Okay, the policy committee, we met on January 19th. And we discussed, we had gotten feedback from our school attorneys on the draft policies. We had sent them for review. As you may recall, those were all kind of interrelated. They were rather sensitive in terms of, they addressed nondiscrimination, sexual harassment, bullying. They're all interrelated, and they're all required policies. And we were looking at them because there were changes in federal and state law that impacted them. And so we had drafted policies, we sent them, because they were so sensitive, we sent them for our legal review, and we did get feedback. So at our meeting, we discussed the feedback. We came up to consensus as to what we wanted to do based on that feedback. And right now, we are in the process of editing, amending the drafts. And we will, once we all have, are in agreement that they're what we want them to be, then we'll be getting to you. We're not there yet.
Okay. Are these like all at the same state? You're working them all together?
We're working them all together because they are, they really are interrelated. We don't, if we change one, we want to make sure the language in the others are in sync, essentially.
Okay, so that's probably, like, are we talking March?
If everybody on the board, on the committee gets healthy again, that's kind of holding us all up. We've had some little bit of downtime, most of the committee.
Any needs from the board or the district at the time?
No, just time.
Okay.
And patience.
Well, we'll move on to CPLAC, the Public Library Advisory Committee. Well, you both can.
Okay, let me think. The big thing that came from CPLAC today, we were going to have a new member. I think we just got the letter tonight, and it will be put before the board next week to approve. Sheila Stumpf is going to be our new member on CPLAC, and we're very excited about that. And so the paperwork will be. We spent a lot of time on today, on, our librarian will be here next meeting. I can't wait for her to come because she's so wonderful. And I know you may all have some questions for her. And she can answer them a lot better than I can. However, we're working on a strategic plan, and she has been very active in making it simple for us, that we can, we're going to reach out to the community and have groups of people come in and tell us what they would like to get from our public library. And we will take that. And I think like five meetings we'll be having with different members of CPLAC.
We're looking to get community people. So we're not looking, no. A lot of us on the board are probably on the older edge of the age spectrum. Yeah, and we'd like to see, you know, that's why I'm very excited that Sheila's joining because she went through school a little bit ahead of my kids, but about the same time. So she's bringing a different perspective to the library board. And we're hoping with these public meetings that we're going to have, and it's not just going to be about the library, but things people in the community would like to see overall. And we're looking to get, you know, people with school-aged children to join, and kids with preschoolers to join, and to get a real feel for what our community is looking for. Not just, you know, and then generalize it down into the library, but it starts out in the big, total picture. And it'd be nice to see, you know, so that people who have diverse feelings within the community can express their feelings, and we can begin to pull together what people are looking for.
And this is something that we have to do, and it has to be done by this fall.
Right. And she started it, and she did it at the libraries that she was with just before she came to us. So she has a really good understanding how to go about the strategic plan.
Right. And we, as board members, will give her some names to call because it's going to be, I went through this once before, about 10 years ago. And it's not an easy task to get people to come and take part in something like this. But I think she's very optimistic. She knows what she's doing, and you're going to be very impressed when she makes her presentation, I believe.
I totally agree.
Anything else?
A lot to add.
Two quick questions. Are we at full CPLAC membership at this point?
We will after, yes, we will.
If we fill that one seat, yes, okay. And the strategic plan, was there a previous strategic plan that has run its course that had a specific timeline? Or is it just, it's old? Okay, so we, our old one ran up and we're on a deadline. But I'm excited for fresh ideas there. And for anyone that doesn't realize it, we're somewhat unique at Chatham School District in having fiscal and advisory oversight of the library. Typically, those are independent or managed by another municipal body.
The use that our library gets, you're going to be, you're very impressed at first with a library like Chatham.
Okay, yeah, I'm looking forward to that. Anything that, it seems like we got the word out about membership. Anything that CPLAC needs for the board or district?
Next meeting.
Okay. We're into the finance committee. Pat, I know Mike popped your bubble a little bit, but do you want to just brief us quick?
Actually, I had nothing more to add.
Okay.
I think I just saw my nose as you covered everything at once.
Okay. We can move on. So I just got a note passed to me that Melanie Spock's in the room. So if she could raise her hand and introduce herself. Melanie, since I've been here, Melanie is the first person to step forward and express interest in representing our school district to BOCs, so to Questar. So Questar is our local BOCs. We depend on them for an awful lot of shared services. Things that we can't provide here in the district directly, or things where it makes sense to share services with neighboring school districts. So it's great to get some representation up there. Melanie, do you want to, like, give us, like, one minute? Yeah?
Been a long day. Anyway, I'm Melanie Spock. I've been on the Chatham School Board in the past. I served eight years. I actually served with Beth and Muriel. And I was the president for six years. I'm very, very interested in education for all students. And when I was approached to be on the Questar board, I was, my husband's like, what are you doing? I'm like, you know, it's just in me. I am passionate about students and education. It's very important to the Spock family. It's very important to be involved. So I said I would really like to do it. So I approached Matt and the school board and sent my letter in, and I hope that you will be supportive of me. I'm a very good listener, I'm a very good communicator. I think it should be a two-way street. If you have something you need me to convey to Questar, I'm here to do that. Keep me up to, I would like to be kept up to date on, you know, what's important to you, so I can understand that too. And I hope that you would support me being on the Questar board. The first step is to be, you have to be nominated by our school district, and then you have to be voted by the other school district. So it's a bit of a process. The term would be from, I believe it was this July, to the year 2025. So it's a three-year gig. So it's a three-year, three-year gig. That's all you have, Matt?
I think you've covered it. So I have a motion here on the table, which I'll present. So R51, be it resolved that the qualifications of Melanie Spock have been reviewed by Chatham Central School District Board of Education and deemed eligible to serve. And therefore be it resolved that the board approves the nomination of Melanie Spock as candidate for the Rensselaer Columbia Green BOCs Board. Can I have a motion? Questions or comments?
Comments.
Go ahead.
Comments. I've worked with Melanie for many years on board on the Chatham Foundation. She is passionate about education. She's passionate about anything she puts her mind to. And Questar is very lucky to have you, Mel.
Thanks, Marielle.
And I wish you the best.
Thank you.
And I truly mean that.
I know you do, Mariel. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor? Motion passes. Melanie, thanks for joining us here today.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So we're going to move on into consensus agenda. R52, be it resolved that the Board of Education accept consensus agenda I through K as written. Can I have a motion? Any questions or comments on this list? It's rather short tonight. Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Oh, all, any opposed? We're into items for future agenda. I'm not suggesting agenda item here, but just as a reminder for anyone on the board that's not paying attention to the calendar, we are almost in election season. Petitions are, when do they do? April something? Sixteenth or seventeenth? April 18th. Okay. So we'll talk about that again next month.
I just had a question.
Sure.
This might be for like Dr. D'Angelo. And I know it's kind of, it's kind of like, they're not really irrelevant, but I saw that there were like extra at-home like tests. Did like a lot of people go get those or, like, I know that we had that distribution, but I saw that there was like a second round of them, where there are a lot of people that got those.
Quite a few. In fact, thank you. This will give me an opportunity to say that tomorrow, we're picking up another large shipment from Questar. My understanding is with this shipment, Questar will have received about 80,000 home tests to date through the governor's initiative. We have, we did the original drive-through distribution and then we sent out several notifications that any parents that wanted additional tests, they simply needed to contact their main office. We send them out on a daily basis. We've also had two distributions to staff. But now it's an, we have such a supply that it's an open invitation to staff to stop by their nurse's office or main office on any given day. And in anticipation of the February break, with this next shipment, we are going to send a large number of tests home with students in hopes that if there is any spike that might come about because of the break, that we could be more proactive than we were able to during the Chris, the holiday break, because those tests were not available ahead of time. And encourage people, it's only voluntary, but encourage people to test perhaps during the middle of the break and then closer to that Sunday or Monday morning when students return. So just as a matter of, you know, public interest, anybody who would like home tests for their students simply need to contact their main offices. And we're now comfortable with sending them home with students. We put the ones for the elementary students, we put them in a sealed envelope with the parent's name on it. We send them through backpacks. So you don't have to make, you don't have to necessarily make a special trip in to pick them up. If you so choose to do so, we have them available at the front entrances with our reception, with our attendance, people at the front entrance at three buildings. So there's a bunch of ways to get them, test, test, test. That's one way that we can make sure that if you're not feeling well and you're positive, you're staying home.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. I think we're through the, the, the president agenda and we're back into our second pub, public comment. So this public comment period is intended to be open regarding any matter affecting the school district or the school community here. So any school stakeholders? I think, do we have anyone that signed from the last that didn't? Okay. So if anyone would like to speak, just sign in. We'll give you a minute to do that. And if you're online, you can.
We do have one person online when you're ready.
Okay. Well, why don't we start with the online hand? Please, when the mic switches over, please state your name.
The person who signed is, in is Richard Fisher. That might be.
Okay.
That's Sandy, okay. Sandy, I'm going to promote you. If you.
There we go. There we, oh, there we go. Can you guys hear me?
You can.
All right. Awesome. So I have three things that I wanted to just mention very briefly. Number one, Monday, this coming Monday is Senior Capstone Presentation Day. And I know that a couple of our board members have RSVP'd and are going to attend with us that day. So we're super excited about that. The seniors have been working really hard. I've seen so many presentations. The kids are excited to present to each other, which is awesome. And they're giving each other really great feedback. So I think this is going to be a really good year for our presentations and I'm really excited for that. And we're excited to have, you know, our admin and, and board members with us. But my question is, I know that we lost power, gosh, I don't even, I have no concept of time anymore. A week or so ago, because we ran out of fuel. And that was because from what I can understand, they hadn't accounted for the, the extra fuel being used by the sports and the theater. So my, my question and my plea is, are we making sure that we have enough fuel to get us through the weekend? Because Panther Pride is on Saturday, so that's going to be a big day in our, in our sports facility. And we don't want to lose fuel on Monday afternoon for these senior capstone projects because that would be devastating. So that's point number one. Point number two, I got to give a shout out to Chuddy. Chuddy and Brantley had to pinch hit and coached the girls' basketball team yesterday against Catskill, which was actually in a really amazing game. And, you know, thank you and Brantley very much for stepping in and, and helping the girls' team out. Because I know they really appreciated it. My niece Erin's on the team. And, and that, that's a big deal. And then the third thing is robotics is off and running. We have a small group, a lot of freshmen, which is awesome. We're, we're kind of counting this as our rebranding year, our rebuilding year. And we've got a robot up and running that can take, do almost two of the challenge, two of the three challenges so far this year. So it's really exciting. So if you're ever in the building between three and five and want to pop down to the, to the wood shop, we'll, we're in there working furiously and we'd love to see you and show off what we have. We'll probably be taking over the cafeteria soon with some, some built pieces. But it's, it's awesome. Good things are happening. So thank you.
Looking forward to where robotics goes this year. I know we missed that one. That's it for online hands, right?
Let me check. Looks like another one just went up.
Okay.
Yeah, we have one more online. Do you want to go to them next?
Yeah.
Sandy, I just want to make a comment about the fuel. We, we now put a protocol in place where we're checking that each morning. We believe the issue related to a previous evening's fuel fill-up that wasn't quite done correctly. We don't believe it. We received a full tank, which led to that issue. So we are checking that now every morning, correct? And we have, we have a delivery every morning regardless of whether the weekend. We do play a little surcharge for a Sunday delivery. It's not much, it's modest, but we do have fuel delivered every day. And we hoping that we can avoid a disruption that, that day that, like that day that caught us off guard. Okay. I'm going to now. Sandy and Alan Livermore, you're going to be coming up. Give it a second to kick in and then unmute your microphone, please. Just if you'd unmute, you should be good to go.
Hello. My name is Julian Livermore from Mary Edardis Elementary School. My goal is not to make, change your opinion, but to have you consider my experience. I have been in this school for four years, but I have never had to wear this mask. I grew up in a world where masks were used in hospitals, but not in school. Also, this brings me to gym. I used to love gym. I would be so happy when it was gym day. But now I dread gym because now if you take your mask down, what happens is it's a loss for your team in some way. I hate that. I hate it because of unfairness. Some people I talked to said that they didn't like having to be forced to wear masks and wearing them, but like at lunch, they didn't and wearing them on buses. Some people weren't, someone was not allowed to wear, or was not allowed to play basketball because they were not vaccinated. And they had to go to the principal, finding it hard to breathe. Thank you.
That kind of youth participation at every meeting?
I don't see any more.
That's it for additional. And I wasn't watching over here. Do we have any? Okay.
Boy, so much has happened this last week. It brings me back to the, the policies that are coming through, the draft policies. Is there going to be a time when stakeholder input can happen when that is produced? When you guys do get to that? I'm starting to learn a lot about how these committees work, especially at the state level. Lots of crazy things going on, especially with the mask mandate, the court, you know, saying that it was unconstitutional, you know, all this stuff that's happening, right? I'm really getting into the weeds about procedure. And that's really, this is to all the parents out there. There are proposals that are at the state level that are going to be put into permanent law if we don't actually say something about it before February 14th regarding masking. Just it's handing over the law instead of the legislative process. It is actually going to, it will be, the health commissioner can, at any time at random, just say, we have a health emergency. Everybody needs to mask. We need people paying attention because you have, they have to go through the rules of letting public comment happen. So I'm like, okay, I'm learning a lot about public comment. Very important. We're going to have to keep this up because a lot of people don't know what is actually happening at the state level. That being said, I also understand how you guys literally have your hands tied because some of the school boards that did decide to go with the optional masking are being threatened at the state level by the teachers' unions, by the governor, by the Department of Health. I start, I'm starting to see why stakeholder input is kind of useless, but we still need to keep pushing back. We need to find a way because somehow or another, our laws have to work. Right now, they are all operating, the governor and the Department of Health, the Department of Education are operating outside of the law. Nobody is standing up and saying anything about this. But it's building, it is building, there is a momentum building. I mean, you wouldn't believe the stuff I'm seeing out there. So just keep that in mind. I know that you guys are kind of stuck right now, but you've got to keep that in mind when you're going down the road, making these policies, that it is going to pop at some point. And you don't want to be behind the wrong side on this. So this is important because our little town needs us to stand up for them. Okay. Thank you. Good time.
Thank you, Marielle. And you know, I wouldn't normally reply, but you asked a question very specific to board procedure. So there's no opinion here on the board. I can tell you that one of the things that happened when we moved the comment period forward that used to be about agenda items, now we have that opportunity for the public to read the policy before the meeting, comment before the board discusses it.
So it'll be on the agenda for when it.
It'll be on the agenda.
Okay.
And actually, the public will get to comment about it before the board even gets to comment about it. And I think that order makes sense.
Thank you.
Now, it's also just a, as you know, there's multiple readings. They have to be, the board doesn't just look at the first reading and then adopt the policy. There, it has to be two subsequent meetings in a row. And that allows us, and that's a minimum, right? We've gone through policies that have four or five readings. So just for full transparency, the committee is, the four policies that are being looked at now are existing policies, just tweaking them. Often, the policy committee will look at changes in the law and making sure that our policies are following the guidelines they need to follow. Then they're, they're, they come to the board for a first reading. That's a good opportunity for the public to comment. They come to the board for a second reading, good opportunity to comment. And then after everyone's satisfied, then they could be adopted.
Okay. Do we have, did anyone else walk up? We have one more. Okay.
Megan Sharon. So I just want to say thank you for the little bit of positivity and interaction and feedback that you guys gave today. That's come a long way over the past few months that we've been here trying to get some feedback. I would like to say, you know, a little bit about the transparency and how things are shared is that it's not, you know, I understand that the SED has a protocol that you guys stand for for minutes and how information is shared via the public. I can say that Facebook is not super friendly for trying to hunt down information or find meeting minutes, meeting minutes from Board of Education meetings. I know that we've sit here, sat here painfully for hours to discuss things and gone back and forth. And the minutes are sparse. It'll say Megan Sharon and transparency, but that's it. And to expect the general public to go and see the minutes and say transparency was the topic and then expect them to go and listen to a two-hour board meeting on YouTube is a little less than desired in my humble opinion. So I think that that is, it sends you on a wild goose chase to find information and to listen to a meeting and not really be able to apply the minutes to the exact time that the conversation took place. And it kind of puts that burden back on the community to find that feedback. So I think that that would be a positive thing that you guys could perhaps consider, how you share your information and how feedback is shared after conversations occur. Because I do think that we've had a lot of meaningful conversation. And I don't know that everybody who doesn't have access to YouTube or honestly, the time to go to YouTube has three hours to listen like two weeks ago. So I think that would be helpful. I also, you know, appreciate the passion, Mariel, for the library committee and the seeking that feedback from the community for those particular things. And I would like to see that, you know, some of that passion be moved towards the Board of Education meetings and the community feedback that we share. Obviously, you know our opinion on, you know, our opinion on masks and mandates and how we feel that our students are, you know, segregated and discriminated upon. But, you know, that passion for interaction and community feedback from a board, for the school itself, not just the library, would be something that was welcomed with open arms. And then my last comment slash concern would be that, you know, everybody's, the top of everybody's opinion here and comment is the safety with the masks and mandates and three feet or 15 minutes or whatever it might be. But Mia has brought up time and time again for all of these meetings that safety is a concern. So I am assuming that she's doing her thing and speaking with her peers and safety is a concern. Where is that being brought back? If these kids are worried about safety, that's a big issue. You have a sheriff here in the Board of Education meeting, but what's happening to help these kids feel safe? Help them feel prepared if there was an emergency? That's a big gap and that is a big obstacle. So I don't see anything in minutes about how that's being addressed. I haven't seen it on Facebook. I haven't heard it. I haven't heard it from my kids, which are in two buildings. So if safety is not being looked at or not being reasonably thought about, that's a disservice, and you're harming these kids' mental being on top of all of the other issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Is that it for our public tonight? Okay, I, I'm not aware of any issues that require an executive session, so I think we can, this is nearly a record time tonight. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor?
Hi.